After devices from my silent mode, please hold me to at four P M. And need to move her second to present the agenda for today. Counselor Lake, second council, any additions or deletions? During that all in favor, Eric, thank you. Any disclosure of interest today? During that I do have a motion here that council hereby approve and adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Monday, November twenty seven, twenty three, as circled for amended. As the leaders and accounts like any questions, there is a mission to those minutes. During that all question on favor, Eric, thank you. Okay, right up into our student counselors reports, I'll go counselor for Shane.
So our winter sports season is well underway and we had our first sports day on Wednesday, the thirteenth, where we had three of our teams, excluding the senior boys basketball team, went to man to watch. And our junior boys beat Wolverine, but unfortunately our two volleyball teams lost to them. And we are hosting the Lake Superior Stingers on Tuesday where all four teams will play.
Right on. Counselor Red.
The leadership class is starting a third store for the school where students will be able to donate some old clothes in exchange and get new ones. And so good initiative to kind of bring the school together and also recycle because a lot of clothes go to waste and just end up in landfills and stuff. This is a good way to recycle and.
Good stuff. We're going to be doing a, you know, kind of Christmas cheer for at the end of our meeting. So if you want to think of something I'd like to say to the community at the end, so I want to put you on the spot that give you those heads up. Just to, you know, Merry Christmas type thing, if you'd like, and that will get we'll do that at the end of our meeting today. Thanks. Thanks for your reports. I'm really excited about that. That's good. I seen I think on the news about an individual doing that in the city as well as just taking non picked up clothing items, leaving it outside for individuals to grab as needed. What questions asked? That's good that having that rather than you say going to landfill sites.
The bear has pretty good shirts.
Just saying. Picked them up. There for sure. Okay. Up next, we got a C report on the strategic plan for twenty three progress report, of course, going to twenty fours. Strategic planning council set up with administration, which is Korchinsky.
So the town of marathons twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six strategic plan was endorsed by council in May of twenty twenty three. Plan identifies the town of marathon's goals for the next four year term of council, this four year term of council with a focus on five key things, quality of life, infrastructure and environment, economic development, growth and stability, and organizational and fiscal resiliency, along with progressive leadership and collaboration. The goals are supported by strategies and actions that will ultimately transform them into realities. A component of the plan is complete regular performance reviews and present them to council. Performance review and measurement ensures that the plan and strategies contained within are reviewed and adjusted accordingly for success. A tremendous amount of energy and work went into the plan in twenty twenty three, and some of the key accomplishments this year include the active living center, completion of phase one and phase two in December twenty twenty three, which council will see tonight at the special meeting at six P M. A new residential development planning. So this is in the Penn Lake subdivision. So phase two site work was completed under request for interest issued as well as completion of the layout of all civil water and sewer road utility drawings. So this subdivision will be ready to go in the spring of twenty twenty four. Now, the new works and operations facility is on schedule and on target to be complete in August twenty four. Council got a tour of that building and the construction progress this morning. A completion of the Pebble Beach Development Project, which is expected by the end of December. We have do have some materials that are delayed, but that will be complete. Our development of the port authority with Beak to go on. So we've I we've established the corporate entity with a board of directors and a shareholder agreement in place. And we signed a letter of intent with the Q S L group of Quebec City for port operation and development. And we're working on a more definitive agreement at this time with Q S L expecting to be on their schedule for twenty twenty four. Well, I'm enhanced recreation programming. We completed the boat launch enhancements, which included new launch paths, kayak storage, accessible walkways, new solar lighting, a surveillance system and a number of site improvements. Administration is working on a winter carnival for February and we created the outdoor pickleball court at the tennis courts. A new industrial commercial park. So we find if I were finalized a fabric layout and concept to present to the council for the twenty four budget. This is looking at a new development within town limits. A new development at the medical clinic and working with our family health team. We've renovated the lower level for the new addictions program. And that is now complete of that program getting started over at that building. In terms of airports, we're looking at we're completing expansion audit. We have the final draft now and we'll complete the review in December twenty twenty three. This is looking at potential expansions to the airport with projected developments at Gen P G M as well as potentially at Barrick. So other items to date in twenty twenty three that were completed, working on recycling. So with the transition happening in Ontario, we'll be going to circular materials for July of twenty twenty four, which will see significant cost savings on our recycling costs going forward. We re-implanted the community development assistance program. We continue to have regular meetings with our mining industry partners, Barrick and Generation. Our council supported the Marathon Public Library through the tax levy. We completed facility conditioning assessments for all of our municipal own facilities, which will be used to inform a twenty five year capital upgrade and replacement strategy. So this will be an excellent planning document for the municipality. As we've learned this year with some of our older facilities, they require significant investment and this way it'll allow for us to plan and budget appropriately for those buildings. Council supported the group of seven trail association with the municipal accommodation tax as well as the marathon snow pickers. We launched our improved public communications system with the town of marathon notification system. We once again partnered with North Superior Healthcare Group, Marathon Family Health Team. Barrick and Beak to go for physician professional recruitment committee. So that's an active committee that meets quarterly. Supported the marathon beautification group again, as well as the Al Dixon Memorial History. So busy twenty twenty three, and as we look forward to twenty twenty four projects that we've identified as priorities coming out of our strategic planning with council. Active Living Center project development, phase three and the funding plan, completion of the works facility, housing development, including the Penn Lake subdivision and the tiny tiny homes plan. Continuing our partnership with Beak did on around the port authority and other joint development projects. Port authority development, including a definitive agreement with Q S L, support of the local mining sector. Looking at enhancing Peninsula Road through new entrance signage. Looking at Penn Lake Park expansion planning, review of the recreation fee structure. And this is tied to the new active living center of council approves that project going forward. We're going to look at a phase two for Pebble Beach and submit funding applications. Golf course infrastructure, looking at replacement of the irrigation system and expansion of the carbon compound, which will be in this year's budget. By looking at completing road resurfacing engineering on How Street as well as Spruce Street. So we're ready for twenty twenty five to tender those projects. Construct permanent washrooms at Del Earl and on the golf course. So there's another bathroom facility as you're playing around, not just the club posts. Know optimized communication mediums, mediums such as the town website. And then once again, continue our support for healthcare professional recruitment in Marathon. And financially, projects identified in the strategic plan have been or will be included in yearly municipal budgets. And this report is presented for council's information and questions.
Great. Thank you for that report. And any questions or descriptions can that should be then update. That's like.
Yeah, I think it's pretty clear that we nobody should ask, what are you doing with your time? I think that's a pretty daunting list for a really small group of administration. So hats off to what is getting done. And certainly the the big ones are the active living center and some of the other things. One of the smaller things I wondered about though is the groups that are, you know, I look at all the organizations in town. I think everybody's having trouble finding particularly professionals. Is there a way to leverage the group that's already working around healthcare so that we can use it to maybe help the mining sector track professionals, municipality, boards of education? I just I like I just I think about the future and how hard it is sometimes to to connect those people. I don't know if there's a place to expand the role of that committee.
Yeah, it's certainly a valid thought. I think, you know, it is included in our strategic plan, working with, you know, regional partners as well as local ones in terms of workforce development. You know, really what we want to avoid is the competition, right? Where you're you're working in town, but you're you're going from one organization to the other. So I think there maybe is an opportunity for us to identify, maybe, you know, just starting a basic working group with some of our larger employers, just to start that conversation, especially in light of, you know, the potential of, you know, Jen moving ahead as well as, you know, if there's an open pit to read you at Eric. It makes sense. So I would say, you know, that's a good initiative for at least I've started, you know, a discussion in the one twenty four. Thank you.
Yeah, there are. There's a lot of individual communities within the normal district right now that are struggling with replacement of their key professionals with C E Os, treasurers and clerks. So it's that's just us, you know, that are probably taking consideration to healthcare and education sector. It becomes really daunting for the community to attract those people.
Yeah.
A good point. Anything else? So obviously, these are items that we identified for four year strategic plan. These are these are good just updates in regards to that. And of course, we will discuss a lot of these twenty four items as the script is getting identified through the budget process for twenty four. Well, we'll continue on in the phases of each one of those based on funding and so that looks so. We'll have those discussions starting a part of the preliminary discussions around budget. Okay. Thanks for that. Appreciate the update. Up next, we got the fees and service charges for the twenty four fiscal year. Mr. Google, how are you doing tonight?
I'm doing fine. Thank you, Mary Council. So prior to the start of each fiscal year, rates for the municipally provided goods and services are presented for council's approval. In determining the twenty twenty four fees and charges of all occasions are considered legislative rates, council's cost recovery objective, operating cost increase in comparisons with similar services offered elsewhere. All of the proposed fees are listed in the attachment. Generally, a three and a quarter percent increase was applied to most fees and recognition of labor negotiations. Equipment rentals have been increased by five percent due to the rise in cost of fuel and lubricants. Surplus funds from tax sales must be paid into the Superior Court. Staff must arrange for the transfer of these funds and the municipality does not benefit from this work. Towns administration fee is to be increased to four hundred dollars. The new chief building official has revamped the fee structure of the building permits based on his experience of the amount of work required to process these permits. Annual fee for the commercial billboards on Peninsula Road from Highway seventeen to the Hydro One offices are increased by ninety dollars to three hundred dollars a year. Bag tags are increased twenty five cents to two dollars and seventy five cents each. Tipping at the waste transfer station is increased from ninety eight dollars per ton to a hundred and twenty five dollars. Taxpayers are still subsidizing the process of solid waste by over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty threes. Residents have the ability to manage the amount of waste that they generate and thereby thereby reduce their costs. Water and sewer rates will be increased by three point one nine percent by changing the sewer sear chart from forty eight to fifty four percent of the water rate. There continues to be a demand for renting facilities. The rental rates have been increased by five percent to capture this additional revenue in the arena, Lakeview Hall and Penn Lake Park. Daily admissions to fitness programs have been reduced to reflect that the operating on dry land is less expensive than maintaining a heated indoor swimming pool. Golf carts and locker rentals have been increased by ten percent. The town installed a sixty thousand dollar ramp at the boat launch in twenty twenty three. The operating cost of this facility is still being subsidized by the taxpayers by forty five thousand dollars in twenty twenty three. It is proposed that commercially users of the launch area should pay a higher rate than local owners of pleasure crafts. User fees generate approximately three million dollars in revenue annually. Each dollar raised through fees lessens the burden of burden of generating funds through the property tax rate. The options available to council with respect to this matters include accept proposed fees as presented in by law two zero six five or accept the proposed twenty twenty four fees and charges with amendments. Administration presents this proposal for your consideration and approval.
Thank you very much for the report. We will have a follow up coming forward with those fees and charges, but we'll open up questions right now. Mr. Google. Anybody? Counselor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. So for the boat launch, um, the proposal to have commercial users pay more than local owners, what what would that kind of look like?
Uh, current, so for example, currently the annual rate for boats is a hundred and two dollars a year. It's proposed that annual rates for non resident commercials will be a thousand dollars or local commercial uh entities will pay five hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, because I did some research today and a lot of places all have resident versus non resident. Alright. Fees for that, so.
And this is new. We just think that the commercial organizations have a greater ability to capture that cost for using the boat lines by charging their customers more. And typically they're a larger vehicle, a larger vessel. So you can assume that they have more wear and tear on the dogs and the boat launch also.
Yeah, I agree. That would be a correct assumption.
Would that include the like you see the Canada government of Canada fisheries boats, would they?
Of course.
Okay.
Are they non resident?
They're not resident.
So resident commercial, you're saying five hundred recommended and the fee structures. So everybody's clear, non resident is one thousand.
Correct.
The federal government would be a thousand dollars annually and not the resident commercial operator would be five hundred.
Right.
Okay. Any questions on that?
On residence versus non resident?
For commercial use.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, now, do anybody have any questions in regards to the fee itself or the residents in regards to the launch of their small pleasure craft? That's an increase as well.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, I I it's such a funny one, right? I can think about like obviously it's an expensive municipality, users should pay for it. So the way we tend to think about it is the golf course, right? If you pay a golf cart fee. The only the only thing that that I think is different is like we built the golf course. And if you go there, you go to golf. We didn't build the lake and that's the only point of access to the lake. So there is a element, a little bit. But I think that we want to, you know, make it as equitable as possible for everybody. Like I think lots of the enhancements down there are for everybody in the municipality. And I certainly don't want to drive people away from what I think is the one of the best parts of what living here. So so while I agree that, you know, there should be a fee for folks using the lake and it should be free. I do wonder if there's a if a if a hundred percent increase feels a little steep all at once. I don't know if there's a way to gradually get there or some sort of compromise. I certainly, you know, like I buy, I'll take myself. I have a I buy it every year because I think I want to support the launch. And at a hundred dollars, I think I took my vote twice last year. It was fifty bucks a time. That's a lot of money, but I think it's a really valuable service. At two hundred dollars, I probably don't buy it. So I so I don't know. Like I just, I get that there needs to be a fee. I'm not. I'm not sure what that fee ought to be. And I guess I would ask other counselors.
Okay.
I was going to piggyback off Council Wheeler and Council Lake. I agree with both of what they said. So I thought too, like a fee, yes, normal increase, yes, a hundred percent, not likely off the hop. Then two, you know, all your local users are going to get it. Joe comes from Timbuktu for a weekend. There's nobody down there really monitoring it. And speaking of launches boat for a week, come down for a fishing trip and then get away with not paying any launch fee, right? So here to get, you know, your local users paying those fees, but people that are coming in and out of town for three to five days a week. If they don't get caught, they don't pay, right? Whereas a golf course, you rent a car, you pay for that. The access or card, you know, there's as being police or monitor in a sense. Then my second thought sort of surrounding this, and it can be kibosh, but it's just me thinking out loud. Is it possible? I know it sort of happened in the past where it was ran by a volunteer group, right? So you offset or offload some of the municipal costs of upkeeping it. Reduce reduce the burden on on the taxpayers and do you you go back to, you know, putting it out there to see if a volunteer group would be willing to take that on again. Kind of like a similar arrangement that we have with the Cross Country Ski Club or you simply tie the road in and out, make sure it's maintained or accessed. But aside from that, the rest is on that volunteer group and keep it coming. The volunteers aren't there to put that, you know, the the dogs in and the boat and the launch in then sort of falls on them and not necessarily on us. And I'm sure if you got somebody who's a religious fisherman and there's no, there's no launch there, well, he's probably going to step up to the volunteer group to make sure there's a launch there, right? Y'all know enough fishermen in this town that they can likely come up with four, five, ten, a dozen guys to form that volunteer group and then releases or remove some of that burden on us. That's another thought too.
So historically, when we redeveloped the boat launch, we looked at the fee structure and we were probably at the two hundred dollar range when we talked about originally. We brought that down to be realistic because it was a new thing, a new fee charged, and we said, oh, we'll implement fee increases as we go forward based on the amount of work. As you heard from the treasurer, still an annual forty five thousand dollar deficit based on previous income from boat launch rentals and usage fees. So the taxpayers in general are paying subsidy of forty five thousand dollars annually for the maintenance and upkeep of the boat launch for boat dogs being installed on that. And I appreciate that you're talking about the volunteerism, but one of the big reasons why the municipality took over because volunteerism has gone by the wayside. And sure, somebody will say, I'll do it today, but the the municipality was always assisting anyway. And it just became more and more the responsibility of the municipality. So it's a tough one and we can, you know, you can always look at all those options and have people volunteer and commit. But you still need Mississippi to be the general operator of the facility, maintain the the docks, the the liability. It's on us because it's our boat launch. So all those various things that come into play are what's the effect, right? So, you know, with the increase of two hundred dollars to two hundred dollars, sorry, but a hundred percent, I'm certainly recommending them because it's transition still. We talked about that when we originally put the ball launch reason, transitioning this year going from one oh three to one fifty. So be a fifty percent increase and no different in the daily and and three day pass. And now that everybody know, this is still a facility that you're utilizing in the municipality. And as council would have identified, other communities have fees or not fees, but we want to make sure that the taxpayer is not picking up all the burden. Now, how does the supply incorporate their charge for that facility? That's up to them. We want to make sure we're transparent with the rate pairs saying, hey, forty five thousand dollars is the cost. We're trying to get back some of those dollars to tell us that those costs are pretty.
And I, yeah, I agree. I don't want to speak on behalf of users of that because I don't want to vote there. But I'm sure for those that regularly do, right? It's singles or any user group, if you're you're spending a fee to launch a boat there, they want to see that money being used for the launch, right? I'm going to say the ninety eight percent of the people that use that boat launch probably don't care if there's a picnic table on the flower pot. Right? So the the user fees for that boat launch are being put back into that boat launch and docks and whatever else needs.
Yep.
So people can safely.
And it is, as you said, as Mr. Virbo identified, sixty thousand dollars for the ramp. The ramp was put in this year. There was a bit of a offset to wrap. It'll be adjusted. Hopefully we'll talk about that in the budget process for twenty four because of the install. It was just the equipment wasn't incorporated equipment, but that's beside the point. The rap is in and the launch is in. It's a it's a accessible lake for everybody who has a water craft in our community. I've talked to a lot of fishermen and they're quite happy with it. You know, obviously a little bit of a lean is is there, but we got the dock system. That's very expensive. Those things, the fish cleaning station, landscaping round to the parking lot, the signage, all those things cost money, right? However, the surprise, as you said, you know, put into the budget, that's up to them. But is that is that a fair proposal for council to consider?
Yeah, so I I do think that's a fair proposal. I think certainly that's a, you know, kind of meeting the middle, which is good. I do wonder though, like, like I see like that facility now, when I go down there, I go down there quite a bit in the summer in particular, lots of folks are using the docks to fish off of and like it's not, I do think.
Just voters.
Yeah, like I don't mind it not being full cost recovery because I see lots of people using what is a thing. I do wonder though, again, I think in years past, we talked about maybe using a campground facility or or something to capture some revenue down there so that it does bring back some money. I'm just wondering if that if that idea is still around from administration's point of view, or if we can see that in a, you know, a ten or twenty year plan to have other ways to, you know, get revenue from folks that like are all camping down there anyway, quite frankly.
Just to clarify, the boat launch cost, the forty five thousand dollars net only deals with the fish station and the dock and the launch. If everything else is coded to parks.
Right. Okay. All the landscaping that's been cut to grass as well.
So that's not.
The office. So but still regards to thanks for that information for clarity, but the reality is still forty five grand. And on top of that, there's the addition of parks fees that that we're all paying as taxpayers in the community. So I have no problem going back to the voting community and saying, hey, you're going to pay fifty dollars more to utilize the boat launch for the summer. Hundred dollars would be a little bit, I guess, we'd all get pushed back on that for sure. But they got to realize it's still a fee. We all, anybody who goes, as Mr. Virbo identified, I go up and I pay two hundred dollars a year plus this going up in additional increases share as well to utilize that compound right by my book. I don't need a buggy, but I I use it for convenience, right? So.
That's so soon.
Yeah, back to sort of I said, I need to see what like the enforcement, I apologize, I should probably should know this. Is it just like an honor and trust system right now? You go online to get your your launch permit for a week or nobody actually goes down there to monitor.
Twenty twenty three was a little bit gnarly because had a lot of things you hadn't managed to it. But previously, the bylaw officer was going checking of windshields and so forth to make sure that they have a permit visible.
Yeah. Yeah. So with that being said, with direct administration to reduce that hundred percent to fifty percent, so that'll that'll reflect a bit of a reduction in your overall revenue. Okay. Anything else that jumped up for anybody in the presentation and they had the fees charged with the council for some.
Okay, so this is some feedback from from others and kind of what I perhaps when you feel myself a little bit was for bag tags. Really, counsel, like usually brings this up every year, but I'll take the reins this year.
Okay.
Unless he unless he's going to piggyback on that. I totally get like, you know, you have to have some fee and offset some of those costs, but to continue like this increase, and it gives me three dollars next year, it'd be three fifty the following. Is it possible? I know we we spoke like the the development fee or something like that on taxes. I don't know if it's possible to do like waste transfer fee and you say it's say fifty weeks, you put in a can for the roadside, two fifty a tag, hundred and twenty five dollars a year, it's roughly per household, the roadside pickup limit to one can. Any excess, you do have to use a waste transfer station. You set up a debit credit there and you pay per weight.
So so we did talk about that in the past, having a levy. Freedom. No, 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 we know a levy on each home. And it got turned down because it was a user fee. The user fee was based on the amount of usage you use the landfill site. So the recycling program was for an option for you to recycle your waste to go not to the curb. So you could actually put a bag out once every three weeks if you're really diligent on your recycling, which was free. So that was that was discussed. And that's how the road was taken from putting in bag tags in ritual was to go with that road. There's no doubt that as Mr. Virbo identified with a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit still running a landfill site and waste diversion and waste garbage. We'll be saving you as we're from Mrs. Kurchinski in regards to the recycling program. That'll be about half of the twenty four year, right? We'll pick it up July or twenty five with a blue box system. So we can have administration to look at that before we set that that one fee in stone, but there is there's a cost of waste.
Hundred percent.
You know, we all know that and it's what user pay rather than taxation pay because the homeowner with seven people in the home is not fair and equitable to the guy with one person in the home by having a levy across the board.
Agreed.
So that's where the.
I got in the family of five.
Right.
I got one can of road every try.
Right.
With things, kids and diapers.
Think how you would implement that. So we would have to do some peoples. You have a kid that was just born. All of a sudden, how does that affect the levy? And the thing is levy is based on the value of your house. So no matter how many people you have, the levy will be based. People whose houses are valued more than someone else.
Well, I think council is going to say clearly as the flat fee for every only be two dollars a month, fifty dollars a year, whatever. But we did, we went through all that process and the fair, the most fair and equitable system was a user pay. Whether you like the amount of usage and pay you pay is the question that we've got to decide.
And just to let you know of all the garbage that goes. And just to let you know of all the garbage that goes to the landfill, only 20% is collected by the garbage.
Yeah, no, I know. People bring it themselves.
Correct.
Well, I know it is because there's a saving for the staff for sure. But if we went to a five day pickup and didn't allow anybody to go landfill site, that would be an additional heavy cost on the municipality. And it would be less revenue because the people don't realize when they go to landfill site with five bags, they're paying a minimal fee to go across that scale. But if they put it to curbside, they're going to pay one bag tag per can, which is 250 today. So it's a, it's a really weird, there has been a drop off garbage person, you know, in person community forever.
You gotta go see the bears.
There's no more bears. So council, sorry, really good.
I'm good. I think I'd just rather see some different alternatives and keep increasing back tags.
Your worship, but maybe what I could suggest on, on this one with, with council's approval is we could revisit this item during the budget process. We're still working through the mechanics of the transfer of the recycling system in Ontario. We have a pretty good sense of what our savings in recycling is going to be, but we won't know that until we actually crunch the budget itself. So maybe it makes more sense that, you know, we, we pulled this at 250 for the time being. And in January, as we work through that budget process, we'll have a better sense of, you know, what waste looks like moving to that new recycling system in Ontario.
Yeah, sounds fair, council.
Well, and I don't want to, and certainly correct me if, if I don't, it's nice to have another person who I think agrees with me is it's actually, I don't have a problem with increasing the cost because that's the cost of garbage. The problem is the bag tags themselves. If we could find a system where you got one bag of gar, one thing of garbage that you didn't have to put a tag on. You pay a bag tag additionally for any other thing. That was just the thing that would make, I think, some sense and make it easier on, on residents. That way you're not going to have to buy the bag tags on a, for me, it's usually Thursday night or 11:30 and that's hard because I really don't have any.
But the person that only puts out one can every three weeks is still subsidizing the person.
And that's maybe what I would be looking to administration to say, I get you don't want it, the bag tags, Council Lake, but this is why. And if, if that's the reason, and there are a lot of people like that, then I would say, okay, I get it. But the investigation would be nice. I don't want to take, I, I mean, I just looked at the list of what administration does and want to task them with a bunch of useless and requests, but part of it is just about not wanting to bank it, right?
Like I don't mind looking at different alternatives rather than just keep increasing, keep having and then keep increasing the price of just looking at.
Yeah.
Different options. Before council really asks this question, the reality is when we started the bag tag system in 1997, waste was very reasonably cost and then we had to redevelop a landfill site transfer station. We haul garbage, move garbage two, two, three times to, to the landfill, to the recycling, all the things we do and handle it. It's multiple, multiple touching of that product, which every time you know, we touch a product, it costs money. So, so that's the reality. We're in a, we're in a situation where.
Many other places are surviving without bag tags.
Well, no, but they, they burned the taxpayer unfairly. That's why it's a user fee. That's why this municipality went to a user fee structure. Because if you pay $3,000 tax, well, I put a 5% tax increase on your house and I got, the guy pays a thousand dollars in taxes. He only gets 5% on his own. He's only paying 50 bucks, you're paying 100.
I could respect that. You still have a user base.
That's not the fair and equitable system that was user fee structure.
I, I just wonder, and I mean, I just, I wonder if administration could put their heads together and say, you know, no, this is the only way to do it or if there are.
Well, there's only, I'm sorry for jumping in, but there's only one way to do it. You need money. So either cancel the bag tags completely or keep it at status quo or you go to a tax base.
Well, except is there a way to do it that's not based on your assessed value of your home? Can you do a flat fee?
No, because that's administrative nightmare. And then you still have to have a fee at the landfill cycle where people are going to go with the garbage truck and they're half ton and they're, you, the construction guy and the contractor, right? So there's going to be a multiple system layer. I think this is a good system. We've, we've already put this thing to bed in 1997. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't think we should have debated about the bag tags. I think we should be debating whether the fee goes from 250 to 275.
Yeah, and I'm, I actually have no problem with the fee going up because I, it has to reflect what it costs to do.
Operation.
I would like to have the bag day conversation if it's, if it's one you can have. I just like, it's, it might not be administratively.
So for council, I'm sorry, council like council, Suki, I think the best thing we should have did was look at the strategic planning process and for the four years of this term of council, that would have been identified item we bring to administration, say, in four years of this term, we want to have a system that the bag tags are different looking today than they are, than were yesterday.
Or, or being told like, no, it just doesn't work, which is also, I mean, I, I can live with it. Like we've lived with it for all, all my homeownership life, I use bag tags.
So I know we've kind of beat this enough, but I just wanted to make the comment of bag tags is probably the biggest thing I've had residents talk to me about. And like Mr. Suki and everybody that I've, I've said about, like, how do you, like, a single older couple brought it up to me and I brought it up about, hey, like, what about a family of five? And they said they'd be willing to pay the same, they just want to get rid of bag tags. And I've heard that from every resident I've talked to about bag tags. It feels the same way I bring it up to you.
So you're, so just, you know, so, so the way to do it, if, if council, you know, we can't do it today.
No, no, no.
Right, is you would, you would have to eliminate it. And you, so we're looking at probably north of $800,000 you're adding to the tax.
That's what.
That's what waste costs if you're not generating user fees, if you're putting it solely on taxes. So you're probably looking, that's, that would be one fifth of our operating budget. So you'd be looking at a sizable tax increase.
But, but it's funny when I listen to council, we're looking, it's all fair because people are saying that. But when the reality is presented back to them by saying that very thing, that they only spent 50 bucks a year on garbage, that's one bag every three weeks. But if they were putting it on their tax, now the tax is actually increased by $400 over that year. And then it's a compounding effect because the foreign doors, not just foreign doors. Next year it's 5%, we need 5, 6% to get that taxation. Now it's 400 plus 6%. And you know, you see the compounding effect, whereas the bag tags, it started off in 1997 at $1, they're at 250 today. So the operation is probably was 300,000 in 97, now it's 800,000. So in relativity, we're now being come close to getting the full cost recovery for the landfill site, even though we've increased bag tags by 150% in, in 20 plus years.
I think, I just wanted to say like, that's why we, we brought it up because we appreciate this, we're new to this, right? We appreciate this conversation and, you know, your knowledge, this is for Kraszewski's knowledge. So, and I think that's what people want to hear, right? That's our jobs to, to bring this up or what people say to us. And you know, it's not, it's not the fee increase that, that works for you, right? It's, but I'm glad you just had this conversation.
Good. So with that being said, we're going to ask administration to hold off on the increase for the fees on the bag tags and the waste transfer site increase by tonnage. So they, they come back with a more detailed understanding of the blue box system, which we know we're going to have an impact in regards to that. And then we can discuss in January through budget process, is that fair?
Yes.
So there could be an increase of 25 cents plus the, the 20 some dollar per tonnage, or there could be a less increase based on what comes back for the recycling.
And then as recycling moves forward, is your understanding that it will look the same to the resident, like still putting in a bag, still going on the curve? It's just the funding model.
Yeah. Okay, so and here's the other thing about the shift. So the, the resident now will be paying the fee at every place they buy the product. So there's going to be an increase to each, every homeowner and every resident. When they buy a product, there's going to be an increase on that product, one penny, two penny, five cents, 10 cents, $10, whatever that looks like for the, for the recycling fee that's going to be added on. Is we won't be paying.
You won't be a municipal.
Right. It should never have been, but we were trying to be ahead of the game by reducing the waste. We weren't even mandated ever to recycle, but we had to do it because we have landfill site that was a capacity.
And it was right.
Yeah, and it was the right thing to do. But as we learn more and more recycling in the north, it's really hard to dispose of to the recycling program to get it to the market because of distance and geographic size of our, of our province. Anything else that stands up, Council Lake?
The, the, I had a couple of residents talk and I, I just, I didn't see if it was in the new budget about a senior's rate on, especially people going to. So people that used to go to aquafit are now going to the dry land, which is awesome. But the fee is, is quite high for the booklets, a senior's rate on those booklets. Or, I forget the term, it's not aquafit anymore.
Yeah. So we, there's, we did, there's not a specific senior rate, but you will see your packages, we did reduce those.
Okay.
So the cost of those programs.
Yeah. So draw that, reduce rather than increase.
Okay, we reduced the daily admissions.
And, and what did we reduce it to, sorry?
From 9.50 to $8 each.
Okay. So that's a nice.
So that's across the board.
That's for everybody, everybody. Okay, and.
But the annual membership has gone up by 3%.
Okay, if you just find daily passes to go utilize the dry land program, they've gone down by $1.50 per pass.
A $1.50 per pass. And would we consider a, we don't have a senior rate for those booklets at all?
No, but they do have a reduced rate if they buy the annual.
They buy the annual. Okay, so there's an opportunity there. So a, a lower daily fee plus a senior rate on the, on the annual membership.
The annual membership has always been there.
Okay.
There $255 versus an adult rate of 350 a year.
Okay, and those would get you into all those classes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's, okay.
Um, just that, I know previously for, for recreational memberships, you used to offer payment plans. That's just an administrative nightmare, doing like quarterly payments or you.
You had three people for the whole year.
So there's one thing in regards to the re-implementation of the community development assistance program that we've improved in the past. We've had that program for, for different groups and organizations. I, I always believe that if somebody in our community is struggling to participate in an activity, we should be looking at an opportunity for them to come in and show their financial means. And that's where it becomes really tricky because a lot of people might bring that, my bank accounts empty. But if the bank accounts got a lot of money, you shouldn't be looking for a discount for the municipality overall. But I, I have no problem if, if, if anybody came to our community service manager or our, our C O and said this, I can't afford to participate in it. I'm sure we work in the community development program somehow to reduce that individual's fees. I, I'm sure that would happen.
And does Jumpstart offer that further?
Yeah.
His program. Somebody's listening.
And we've, we've encouraged people in the past to, to go to the Jumpstart program to get their kids into the minor hockey, first getting programs. And there's assisted there, but same thing, you've got to show your financial means. It's not just a, oh, click and I get 350 bucks. You got to show that you're, you're struggling and if you are, we'll, we'll, we'll work with it, right? Okay, anything else? That they see, one thing I just want to recognize to first council's awareness. So that, you know, the surplus funds that were settled, we don't sell a lot of registered properties, but we do sell registered properties. There is sometimes a higher fee that's paid to the municipality. We, Norm has been pushing back on the government for that. That's, that's something we used to collect in the past and they switched over back to the government. So those revenues should, those would offset some of those little, you know, fees that we're, we're looking at to help this offset. So those, we are working on that to try to get those dollars back to the municipality rather than to the government. And you know, if you have a, a year where there's a lot of registered properties, you see selling them for higher values of the taxation, you know, those dollars going to the province. And take that considered across the province, a lot of money, you know? So the blue box system is one of the identifying things we talked about. This, this is administration is going to identify that, that I'm fine. And then of course the locker rental, you don't need a locker to go, of course, you don't need to park your buggy. Those are going up and I'm quite happy with that. And I'm okay that, you know, those are fees that utilized for, for the convenience of having your clubs or your buggy there.
And we read that they're going to increase the size of the compound.
We are looking at it as part of the this year's budget.
That's excellent. And again, that's good use of, you know, money going back into.
Well, that's a budget that you can either approve or deny, so.
If we make money off it, let's go.
But that, but that, you know, as I said, that is a good example of, you know, the user fees generated from, you know, the car permits would be utilized in the budget and fund that type of project.
Yep.
So it's not on the list, it's through the user.
So overall, as you heard from Mr. Virbal, the, the overall rate increase for fees and charges in 2024 will be just around 3%, just over 3%. But look at the inflationary value that we're all been watching with, whether it's food or gas or, or cost of living in general. It's been higher than that, so, so that's the reality. Cost of the business and whether it's staffing or fuel or interest, taxation, gasoline, whatever you look at, we have to pay as well. And, and then I would encourage all the councils to share that with all the residents, that we don't get no freebies. We're running an organization just like you are running your home. We got to pay the same fees and charges that, that you're paying to run your home that we got to pay to run the organization, so.
But just to summarize, that only changes to the fees and charges as presented is boat launch or pleasure crafts will be increased by 50%.
The day program, the weekend program and, and the local use will be 50% less than what it is projected.
And no increase to bag tags or tipping fees until further ado.
Until the administration bring back the recycling blue box program. Everybody's good with everything else?
Yes. Yeah, I, I mean, I just like, it, it always feels so bad because you think about, at the end of the day, like everything comes out of the residents' pockets for everything we do, right? And I just think all of us have incomes and have to afford it. And I just, at, at some point, I, it just, it keeps.
So council, like, how long you been on council?
Oh, man.
So what point was that, that we, because I've never seen that point, right? Unless, like I, we had a conversation earlier, unless we shut down services to the municipality, the only way we're going to save money is to cut services. That means snow plowing, fire, lease, recreation, staff. We do all that, you will be impacted. And if you don't do that, you're going to have to pay. And as we know from our treasurer, he likes to make sure we save money anywhere we can and it's pretty hard to save money.
And then I do, I like service charges because of your user charges, because if you use it, you should pay for it.
So with our young student counselors, you have any comments on them, lovely fees and charges?
They just want to know how much is it going to cost from the golf.
Perfect. Your student rates, you're still going to get a discount. Okay, thank you very much for that, Mr. Verbal. And we have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attachment for recognition, 24 piece of service charges with adjustments. I'll put that in there because of those two items. And they will be brought back in the 24. Okay, with adjustments. And for that, the appropriate bylaw will be adopted later in this meeting approving the 24 piece of service charge. Move by. That's my concern, thank you very much. Thank you for the debate and we'll move on. Up next, we have a report on 23 tax adjustments, Mr. Verbal.
Each year, adjustments are required to the town's tax accounts. Adjustments recognized with changes in the assessment rule, decision of the assessment review board, clerical errors and the realization that some accounts are uncollectible. This is a necessary procedure to provide us with an accurate picture of our true financial position. Any adjustments to our tax accounts require a motion of council under the provisions of our municipal tax collection policy and various sections of the municipal act. The total amount to be written off in 2023 against tax receivable is $62,075, where $51,547 is municipal share and the remaining $10,000, $10,500 is the educational share. The municipal portion comprises of $10,198 for a reduced assessment, $1,155 for charitable donation, $40,038 for town owned properties and uncollectible an amount of $156. The 2023 write offs in, on our statement of operations is $51,547.16. The budget amount for 2023 was $110,586. Administration recommends that the amount of $62,074 as detailed in the attached schedule be written off this year.
I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the tax report recognition, 2023 tax adjustments for the amount of $62,074.76 as detailed in the attached report we just heard, the schedule be written off for 2023. Move by. That's really the same, my council, like, any questions? Mr. Verbal knows. That's like.
Does that mean $50,000 surplus? Like come down to that, that we can.
That amount will lessen the deficit that we're.
That's great.
Better news.
There is anything the other way. I feel like we're always going the other way, trying to find money. That's, that's lovely, so you're good, yeah, we'll take it.
Anything else I know?
I guess, sorry, I know better.
With that being said, I'll call question on favor. Very, thank you. Up next, we have a report on emergency management plan.
Hey, good evening.
Thanks, Ms. Kraszewski.
The Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, E M C P A, and its supporting regulation 38004 provides a number of requirements for both industries and municipalities. Each year, the community and management, emergency management coordinator, along with the emergency management program committee, are required to review the plan, critical infrastructure, complete a hazard risk assessment and facilitate a tabletop exercise with the emergency control group. The annual review of the emergency plan, IRA, critical infrastructure and the tabletop exercise took place on December 18th. The emergency plan must be approved annually by council via bylaw, and the bylaw must encompass the emergency management program as well as the plan. Any costs associated with the administration of the town's emergency plan have been provided for in the annual operating budget. No direct costs have been incurred, have been incurred with these changes. Your options are A, approve bylaw twenty sixty-four, thereby repealing bylaw twenty thirty-nine as presented, or B, request that administration make changes to bylaw twenty sixty-four. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that council approve the emergency plan as presented and that the appropriate bylaw be adopted.
Great, thanks for that report. And I do have a motion for the council hereby accepts the tax report recommendation of birth on twenty twenty-three emergency management plan. And for that, if we filed off, be adopted later this meeting, uh, approving the town emergency management program and emergency plan. Well, bye. That's like saying my council, any questions of that, that's a link?
Yeah, so like I I just think about, uh, you know. Some of the climate change stuff we're seeing, I think, well, like yellow night this summer, where the fires came and and, you know. Does this sort of set the the ground rules for like what the C E O is going to do during that, what the mayor is going to do? So if we had a fire like that, who does? Like, who does take charge?
So it's the C E O, so I'm I'm the chair of our emergency management group. Um, so on our command, that great question, got to ask the question. Uh, so on our control group, uh, Mrs. Goodchild's our community, community emergency management coordinator, there's the mayor, there's myself. Our works and operations manager, our treasurer, and emergency information officer, who is Mrs. Goche. Okay. They may, they comprise the committee, um, as well as, of course, you know, we would reach out to, you know, Nosh or, you know, Spirit or P M S if we needed to. Uh, in the event, so, uh, the exercise, just as an example, the exercise we went through today was a prolonged power outage in the middle of winter. And it's a very detailed document that we have. Um, so we've identified five major potential disasters for us to deal with. Uh, power outage being one, course, fire being another one, uh, uh, train derailment is another one. Um, and it's 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 a, it's a very. Detailed approach that we take in terms of the documentation that we have, you know, an example would be, you know, in the event that, uh, you know, there was a fuel shortage. You know, what what are, you know, other sources of fuel, i.e. like the town, you know, we have our own diesel at the airport, uh, as well as within town hall. So it's a very detailed process that we go through and every year we complete an exercise based on the five highest potential natural disasters we face. So it's a very good exercise and and we're well prepared, but ultimately, um, it's the C E O that sets the operational schedule, um, in coordination.
I just think we saw lots of natural disasters over the last summer that are, you know, we used to think we're super immune to things like that, but I'm not sure. Looking at the future in particular, if that's going to be the case, so that's a, it's good.
Yep, anything else? Yeah, thanks for that council, like, and you know, you know, you could be totally prepared until all the item hits and then then you're kicking gear and your team comes together. In the past, we used to have all the different players as well as on committee that we we, through the government's proposal, we narrowed it down to the key people. Those other external agencies will all be in contact with the the group and through the C E O.
And just to, just as a reminder for councils, we have identified in our strategic plan, uh, we're going to do a live community exercise, um, within the next two years. Uh, hopefully, uh, we're able to do that with our new fire chief now on board, um, where we actually do a physical exercise, not just a tabletop.
That's cool.
Good. Well, that'd be a circle question on favor, Harry, thank you. Okay, next we got a motion here in regards to the council people that the check runs for November twenty twenty-three be approved for payment, council paid only about a three million one hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and six dollars and seventy-four cents. And payroll only about a one hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-three cents, move by. That's the next thing that comes to getting questions of those payments. There are none, call question on favor. Carrie, thank you. Let's get a verbal update in regards to the, it's simply, I just attended the begin Saturday. Uh, we talked a bit about our strategic plan, we set out some three strategic plan items for the league, which were mental health, homelessness, highway structures and. Those are going to be sent back to the municipalities now to identify within those three pillars, what's the most important thing you see as seventeen municipalities, then the then a vision, please, so we can focus on those. And basically just lobby through Noma and government, uh, to see if we can address those things that, as we were talking this morning in our virtual fairness plan, talking with Minister, uh, the highways. Minister transportation about, you know, the the closures of highways that we experienced last three days, two twelve-hour closures on Highway seventeen corridor. With, you know, that that there shuts down Canada, that is not acceptable. And that's a lot of internal stuff's happening in regards to whether you got to get a corner or you got to get the site, you got to do the investigation, but shut a mean. The artery through Canada for twelve hours now, it's not acceptable. So we've been bringing that forward, the legal bring that forward and discuss that as well through Noma. So that is is a big part of our strategic plan going forward. And then we talked a lot about the organizing of the uh, the A G M, which is in February, the end of February. Uh, it's considered a lead uh program, a lead year this year, so we identified the learning and educational aspect for the league. It just both potentially seventy people going to attend and uh, and it begins hosting, so we're very excited about that. And we we went to the beginning to set up and look at the the facilities at the Legion and uh, identifying that, so. Uh, it was a good session and uh, we uh, we're just looking at the business of league and trying to identify whether the league, again, and I always showed that with councils, the league valid. And working with Noma too. So the other two agencies, uh, on the other side of Thunder Bay, the Cor and the Rainy River districts are still struggling to get up to speed. We're doing really well with attendance and board, but if they're, at the end of the day, there's no need for it, and as I look at council's budget, that costs money, everything costs money. Is there a value to that, uh, attendance and those meetings and those organizations? So we'll continue to focus on that. I'll continue to push that forward in the February meeting. And uh, if we just get together, just for the fact of getting together and talk to each other, that's not money well spent. We need to have a mission and a and a purpose, and I I kind of made that clear. So we'll see what comes of that February. No questions on that? Good. Up next, I have a motion here, some bylaws, about number twenty sixty-four being a law to adopt emergency management program. Emergency response plans meet through, uh, other requirements under the emergency management's and civil protections act. Be ready for a second and third time upon it passes eighteen day of December twenty twenty-three, move by. That's like saying my council, any questions of that? There are none, a call question on favor, Harry, thank you very much. Bylaw being, uh, twenty sixty-five being a law to authorize the establishment of fees and charges for the town of Marathon for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, we were first second, third time possible, passing the day of December. Twenty through three, with the amendments as we discussed earlier, so those will be reflective in the minutes that we discussed about the two two items, move by. As we were saying about council, like, any questions of that? There are none, a call question on favor. Very, thank you very much. And up next, we have a a motion here to identify individuals that will be attending the A G M for Noma, which will be taking place in Thunder Bay, April twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth. Uh, so I, we talked a bit to the student council before, council, Chris, and you and Bob, then yeah, but. See if you're interested in going to that uh Noma conference, we try to encourage our youth to go and participate and also do a little quick presentation up there. Ten fifteen minutes, we give you on the agenda. So are you both willing to attend? Because we'll have to also consider that a budget process.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's good, okay. And then, uh, anybody else in regards to our council?
I can't, I can read council. The students go.
Okay, so we'll put your names down and we'll just confirm at the end of the day what it looks like. Uh, Wheeler, Sukie. And ballots will still be off, correct?
He's he's still attending, he wishes.
Oh, yeah?
He can, yes. I I suggest you just list all council's name, we'll we'll send an email.
Okay.
Um, once the block of rooms, I think block rooms is open and uh, give us advice, uh, our E A, if you're going or not going, for the easiest.
Okay. Yeah, because uh, there's a bit of a problem with room selection, so there's same thing in the, we're we're going to be doing the function at the Victoria, but majority rooms will be at the Valhalla. So that's where the block is. So anyway, with that being said, all in favor? Sorry, I put down council, they can council, it's more, I'm sorry. Okay. And and then prior to adjournment, I give council an opportunity to give the community a little uh Christmas uh message, if you'd like, and we'll start off with council.
I just wanted to wish everyone safe and happy holidays, Merry Christmas, or whatever holiday you do celebrate, just remember it's a time to be with your family. Um, enjoy their their presents, their warmth, their comfort, and we look forward to to seeing you all in the new year.
Good, thank you, Council Lake.
Um, yeah, you know, I, so this year has been really strange. I, my one kid went off to university, my other kids in Thunder Bay playing hockey. I went with him, so I've been all alone in the house. And uh, it it is amazing to me, uh, how, um. Kind of tough loneliness is, um, and it comes in all different forms. I just think, uh, this is one of those times of the year where it's probably good to. You know, check in on folks that maybe are, uh, you you think might be struggling or might be alone or might not have family around. And certainly, uh, you know, you start missing the the loud houses and the running around, the stuff used to drive you nuts, and all of a sudden you're like, oh, man, that actually is the stuff I love best. And so, uh, just, uh, you know, maybe just look around at your group of of friends and then see who, uh, could maybe use. A kind word or an invitation over or a cup of eggnog or, that's what kind of makes Marathon a good community, right? So I'd say that's, a- as you think about the holidays, that's certainly.
Great, thank you, Councilman.
Um, Christmas is a season to hope, and the upcoming new year brings a fresh start for everybody. I encourage everybody to spread positivity for the year ahead and let the magic of Christmas stay with everyone.
Oh, nice, awesome, that's written.
Uh, I'd just like to say on behalf of students at Marathon High School that everyone has a very Merry Christmas and holidays and good new year.
Great, thank you, Coach Gushing.
I just want to say, uh, it's important to cherish the time you have with the your family, especially if you have family members that are coming back from school. But myself, I have a brother that I haven't seen in months, uh, come back from, uh, his time at school, you know, it's just important to spend a lot of time with your family. Cherish the moments you have with them on holiday.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you, uh, Council Licken and Council Wither and Council Suki and their student counselors for that great message. And I just want to bring on behalf of all of us, uh, council and administration, obviously a great uh opportunity for me to express the greatness that we, gratitude that I have working with you guys and gals and our community. And we have a really well, uh, well-oiled machine within our municipality. We go through some debates, as we just did earlier with the piece in charge, where we all come together and work, work on the best of, uh. Best, excuse me, intentions of our community. Make sure we have that place of, uh, uh, you know, the quality of life that we want to, well, want to enjoy and, uh, you know, you really said something that, you know, struck a chord there when I watched the C B C News yesterday, they talked about the. The the biggest thing for the health that now is identified is loneliness. So it's it's taking people out in regards to their their healthcare, their health, uh, uh, status, because there's no communication and we're going, so that's a great message to have. Share with somebody, look out for your neighbor, talk to, uh, talk to a friend or somebody you haven't spoke to for a while, reach out and and just say hello and see if they need anything. And by all means, uh, we just lost an individual, our community, saying he was alone and, you know, there's nobody checking on people, so that's a great message to say, hey. We'll check on your neighbor or somebody down the street and just pop and knock on the door, spend a couple minutes, say hello and uh, and share that with them. So on behalf of my family, I'd like to take it up to wish everybody, uh, safe and prosperous, uh, holidays, a great time to, as council, please, spend time with your family, your friends. And twenty-four was, we identified that through our strategic plan will be very busy and, uh, hopefully prosperous community and men for. The municipality of town of Marathon, so, uh, be safe out there, don't drink and drive, uh, there, uh, there are ride programs that are being taken place randomly all throughout the holiday season. And they're there for a purpose to make sure that you need to get somewhere, call a cab or call a friend, uh, tell you, call your kids. Because, you know, we always drove them around all over the place, and now they can drive the parents around and uh, and if they want to have a social, uh, uh, refreshment with some friends. Pick up the phone and call your kid and say, come pick me up. And they might not be so happy, but they got the car, so they'll be, they'll be happy to come and get you. So, with that being said, have a great, uh, great holiday season and, uh, happy, uh, twenty-four as well. Uh, we, before we adjourn this meeting, uh, we have a closed meeting coming up, right, directly after this. And the closed meeting will be discussing their relations, employee negotiations, as well as information belonging to the municipality. So, uh, thank you very much and, uh, and have a good night, and we will adjourn at the hour of five, four, five P M. Thank you very much.
Thank you.